Yeah.
So key board is.
Accessibility button in the bottom. So on the login on the bottom right or. Accessibility logo. And skill or don't know.
Here's the biggest person.
On the main screen, right, we're trying to log in.
We started at officially staff. I was like, we don't see any more. She's. That's. Got it.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our regular meeting of our Truth to Consequences Commission for January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-six. It is now nine oh two A M. Storrs, would you take role?
Honorable Ralph Hessler.
President.
Honorable Amanda Horstberg.
Here.
Honorable Destiny Mitchell.
President.
Honorable Ingo Hotner.
Yeah.
Honorable Chad Gland.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a form.
Thank you. Move on to item two, silent meditation. We had a pillar of our community, Pat, a couple of days ago, Cookie Guns. I've known Cookie, I've known of her ever since I moved to Truth to Consequences and became really friendly with her in two thousand and five when she helped my wife get through breast cancer. Her illness took her really quickly and wasn't ready for her. But she's going to be missed. And she's had a rough time the last few months. Her husband's a dementia patient now at the Veterans Administration. Ironically enough, she was a leading investigator at the Veterans Administration earlier in her career. But she's done a lot for our community as a former mayor, served on the Spaceport Committee. I served on the hospital committee, served on the hospital committee with her. And I know she's going to be missed by our community and everyone in it. So for our next fifteen seconds, please, let's keep her in mind and keep her family in our prayers. Thank you. All right, um, let's move on to the ladies. What was their fault? If everybody had a chance to review the agenda, if there are no changes, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve our agenda for our January sixteenth commission meeting, and I'll second that.
Storrs has a motion in a second. Please take role.
Honorable Ralph Hessler.
Aye.
Honorable Amanda Horstberg.
Aye.
Honorable Destiny Mitchell.
Aye.
Honorable Chad Gland.
Aye.
While we go into item five, I'd like to take care of one quick order of business and recognize the efforts and the work of our most recent retired commissioner, Mary Jo Fall. I want to thank you for your service. Enjoyed working with you. I know that you love this community and everything that happens to this community weighed heavy on you. And you worked really hard to get us through the last four years. We accomplished a lot with your help and assistance, and it was really nice working with you. Does anybody else want to say anything to Mary Jo before we give her a reward?
It's an absolute pleasure. And not everybody gets our humor and our backlash at each other. I'm sure Jay cringes sometimes because you and I are doing some things, but we understand each other and it's been a pleasure working with you.
At the last commission meeting in December, I said some very nice things about you, and I don't remember what they are now. No, but you know, you and I have served on numerous boards throughout the past twenty-five years, and this was an absolute blast. I really admire your strength and your courage and the values that you stand for. And I think you were a very reasonable voice on our commission, and you were much appreciated.
Thank you, Jesse.
Oh, I almost just scared.
Yeah, I always so want to say something here. It was a pleasure working with you, and you are absolute powerhouse. You're making big differences in this town. And we're moving forward. You're still, you're not finished yet. There's many projects that open where your knowledge and your passion is needed. And so I'm looking forward to your role in the future and.
Yeah, we're still going to do our game show, you know?
As we proceed, we're actually going to give you two awards because you're so special. One is a plaque, which is your public service award honoring Mary Jo Fall, Commissioner from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five. In recognition of your outstanding dedication, commitment, and support to the city of Truth to Consequences. That's kind of our standard thing, right? Okay, so as a special award.
Oh, why?
This is a recognition certificate of service presented to Mary Jo Fall, City Commissioner. In recognition for your years of dedicated service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of the city of Truth to Consequences, New Mexico. Your leadership and steadfast guidance regarding the many complicated issues facing our community have made a positive and everlasting impact. Presented with sincere gratitude and best wishes for your future endeavors, December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. We're going to give it to you then. But what's nice about this is that we've all signed it, the commissioners that work with you, because I think you need to remember who we are. And it's something that you can put on your wall. Okay, I would be proud to do that if I see something like that. So with that, let's all congregate in the front and do a photo op.
That's why I wore jewelry.
Me too.
Yeah, there we go. You're allowed to hold it in the picture.
Oh, I can hold it?
No, I have to hold it.
Oh, you.
No, I need to hold that one and hold that one. So potentially.
I get up here. Congratulations and thank you for your service.
As I'm holding you back though, I mean.
Thank you for saying those nice things in the life.
Yeah, he took your other plaque. She's like, let me.
It's not the box.
I gave you that, so you can take it home and don't scratch it. And this is the model for that.
Lucky because I had a long speech off player.
I will yield my time.
Okay, let's get back to our ordinary business, because this is our first meeting of the year. As generally, what generally happens when we have a new commissioner or new commissioners, we go through a reorganization. And so with that, we today need to pick a mayor. We also need to pick a mayor pro town. And I'll open it up right now. If there's any discussion, if not, I'll entertain motions, however you guys want to do it.
I'd like to start. I think we are in good hands here with our mayor. I think you still have lots of good work for you. I think our community appreciates what you've been doing, and I think I would like to make a motion to appoint Ralph Hessler as mayor.
Really swift.
I heard it.
Thank you, Ms. Storrs.
Honorable Destiny Mitchell.
Aye.
Honorable Ingo Hotner.
Aye.
Honorable Chad Gland.
Aye.
Aye.
Guess it's an I. Thank you.
You got me.
Well, I'm honored, and thank you, folks. And I promise I'll continue to work as hard as I can for this community. Chosen to make this community my home. I want to make it better. We all feel that. So thank you for the honor, and I'll be glad to accept it.
Can I talk next?
Yes, ma'am.
I would also like to pass the torch down the line as Mayor Pro Town. And I'd like to nominate Commissioner Mitchell.
I second that. Do you have a motion in a second, Ms. Storrs?
Honorable Chad Gland.
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Hessler.
An enthusiastic I.
Honorable Amanda Horstberg.
Aye.
Honorable Ingo Hotner.
Aye.
That's all the major stuff we have to do, right? Okay, I guess we'll open things up now. Move on to public comment. Steve? Come on up, sir. You have three minutes and please start by introducing yourself and where you live, and then you may be.
I'm Steve Bowers, and I live at six hundred North Voach. Most of you are new faces since I talked to you last, and so I'm going to give you my spiel. In nineties, I went back to school and I got licensed with the Bonneville Power Administration to do energy audits and inspections. Then as today, the cheapest power available for business, for utility companies, for residential is conservation, insulation, weather stripping, caulking.
For six weeks.
So much money, and it's a forever thing. Owning our own utility company, we have a great possibility to really lower our utility rates or our utility consumption. Less power for the city to buy and less power for people in our community to buy, which is simple insulation and caulking. It's amazing the difference it will make. And the other thing I want to mention is to the police officers, because I live at six and Voach, hello?
I listen to you.
Okay, because I'm living at six and Voach, I watch people run that stop sign almost hourly. It's, and I don't mean a rolling stop. They run the stop sign without even slowing down quite often. There are children catching buses there. There are people walking, there are dogs, and there are elderly people, bicyclists. It's really a dangerous situation. Monitoring that intersection, especially with a a vehicle, only your police vehicles parked three doors down. It's just appalling to me how people can run a stop sign with a cop car right there, you know, just put somebody in it now and then. You could greatly reduce the danger on that corner. So that's it. Thank you. See you in my return.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Stacy? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Stacy Bloom-Pay, and I live at five nine five South Voach Street. And I'm asking, I'm a member of the, in board member of the Sierra County Arts Council. And we are requesting that two of us on the board would like to be part of the Art in Public Places selection committee when that happens. And so that's what I'm asking would be myself and Shenoma Breed.
So he's a Shenoma?
Yes. Thank you.
Duly noted. Thank you. Becca Eze.
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Pro Town Commissioners, City Staff, Becca Eze from Main Street T R C with some quick updates on what Main Street has been up to since wrapping up all the Christmas and holiday stuff. We took a little bit of a break, and now we're back to it in January. We have a litter cleanup coming up on the twenty-fourth, so Saturday, a week from tomorrow. Part of the Clean and Beautiful Grant that we get jointly with the city. At one P M. On the twenty-fourth, we're meeting at Healing Waters Plaza, and then we'll spread out around town and clean up. So we're just trying to get folks from the community out to help pick up trash and make our town look a little bit nicer. And that's all part of the in-kind hours that we have toward that grant. So those volunteer hours help us to continue getting these clean and beautiful grants every year. The Voach project is underway. They're finally, finally out working on the street and things are going fairly smoothly. I've been working closely with Assistant City Manager Alvarez to communicate with the businesses. Sending out weekly emails to let them know what's happening that week and as things move forward, if they need to know any changes in the plan or updates. Our wave finding project, which we've been working on for nearly a year and a half now, is nearing completion. The team from New Mexico Main Street is putting last details on the draft final plan, and we plan to bring that to you guys at the meeting on the twenty-eighth. For any last input that you may have on that, and then we hope that you would consider a vote of support, not any kind of financial obligation, but just a vote in support of the plan and of installing these signs, and then we will seek grant funding to actually be able to fund this. We're gearing up for the Lovett Music Series. The beginning of February, I along with two board members from Main Street are going to the Lovett Learning Conference, and we hope that they give us a lot more information about what they expect from the grant and how to put these shows together. And then our plan is in February, when we come back armed with all that knowledge, we will schedule dates and get performers, and hopefully by the beginning of March have everything for the first season on the calendar. And just as a reminder, those will all be free outdoor shows at Ralph Edwards Park. And then finally, we are gearing up Fiesta planning for this year. We've already had a couple of meetings with our core planning team. And that's made up of myself, Mayor Pro Town Mitchell, and she's just in an advisory role this year. We have a new coordinator.
I've heard that before.
Yeah, we're having our first general volunteer meeting on Tuesday, the twentieth at the museum. It's right before the police open house, so we're going to have ours be a quick one and then send everyone over to the police station. So Tuesday, the twentieth at five, if you're interested in volunteering, please come. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I know that Becca sits there in the mirror and like practice.
So many projects.
It's always at the wire. Thank you.
Let's move on to reports. I don't think we have any other public comments. City Manager Whitehead, you're up, sir.
Hello. Good morning. Congratulations to our new commission. Look forward to continuing to work with with each of you on some exciting things that we have in front of us this coming year. Start my, try to keep my report as simple as I can. We have, we're back to normal. We're going to have our department heads reporting to you as well this morning, so we'll try to go quick. Becca kicked things off a little bit talking about Voach Street. You know, that project, hard to miss, right? It's in the middle of town. It's going very well, seems to be in order. The contractors should have some electrical work done today where they're already starting inspections and they're going to, again, build it out. They think in a couple of weeks they'll be starting to put sidewalks down. So all contractors are leaning towards they're, they're moving really well, moving ahead of schedule. So really excited about that. Shovel ready, believe it or not, started. Some of you, we got started off with a bang by shutting the schools down, and so we, again, really, really apologize. We, we did not, they've been waiting for six weeks to get started. And, you know, it took us a while to get the N M E D released so they could start. And so the minute they got it, they, they got started. Opened up one of the lanes on Silver Street, and one of our fittings just actually popped off. So it was just kind of waiting to happen. But the crews did a good job. We resolved that issue pretty quick. Unfortunately, not fast enough for the school. So again, as always, I apologize for that. It's, I know it's an inconvenience to our community, to families, to businesses. We're.
To parents trying to get.
Parents, anything done, absolutely. So our team's going to meet next week. We're going to reconvene with the contractor. They will be working from Silver Street. That's one block on Silver. And then down to eight, and then the line will extend all the way down eight to Ash, and then come back to Ninth Street, and then go all the way across and then go underground under date. So it's going to be a loop line that will create and put new valves. So they're going to be in that area for a bit. So we'll be sending the crew out to identify all the valves in that area so that we can potentially respond a little quicker if we get a water break, so we can get water turned off. Remember, some of the challenges that we don't know are what valves work and what valves don't work, which is what happened that day. It just took us a while to find the right series of valves. The minute we turned off the right series, the pressure at the school came back. So we think if we can solve that in the front end, we'll be better. Part two, we really like what we did on Voach Street, you know, certainly working with Main Street and our office. We communicated really well with the owners in and around that. So we're going to start putting that list together for the folks that are in the impacted area, so we can let them know that we're going to be there and get them on an email schedule so they can keep up with, so we can get them a weekly update of when they're coming and those kind of things, because it will be disruptive. The best part is, right, the work that the commissions in the past have done is going in the ground. Six million dollar project. It's real. It's happening. And so, so we're excited to talk about that. USDA, our Wispy One project is finally almost released. I think we're ready to potentially put it out to bid, which is exciting. That's taken, when I got here, the first meeting that I attended for water, the team had indicated that we would be ready to go to bid on Wispy One in April of two thousand twenty-five. So that's the challenge that it's been to get to this point with changes in the federal government, challenges that we've had there, but it's ready to go, which will be the most exciting project for our water system, right? It's potentially eight new pressure relief valves. The city's running on one pressure relief valve right now. And that's causing the main focus and the main problem where our lines are breaking, where we end up with high pressure in certain areas. So we're excited to get that. I would be remiss without reporting to you on our leak list. Again, it has been a challenge. I want to report to you at the end of December, from October twenty-sixth, October twenty-second forward, we repaired sixty-five water leaks. Late in November, I made a decision that I needed some additional help, and so we brought in a contractor. The contractor that we have helping us with our licensure is also licensed to do repairs. So with that help, we ended up fixing, the contractor fixed sixteen leaks, and the team was able to get forty-nine leaks. So we did, we had, we just have a lot of leaks. This morning, we're still right under twenty. I've made a point that weekly, I'm driving to each of those leaks and trying to help Jamie assess which are, what are leaks that we think are putting out significant amount of water? What leaks are putting out a minor so that I can then, you know, we can send those minor leaks like at a water meter, you know, we have some that aren't running down the street and causing problems. So we're trying our best to really assess, but it does take an effort when you're down twenty, and at that point, again, in October, down sixty-five. So, you know, I really want to thank the team, I mean, to the community. I know it's frustrating, and I know you see the water, but the water team is still, they show up every day and they work. And so, you know, my balance is to figure out how to help keep us as productive as we can and still provide them an environment where they feel safe and they can get out there and work and try to do so. So that's where we are with water leaks. I do want to talk a little bit about the public notice that went out that everybody received. I think it's, it's important to note. We are a young water department right now, and we're going to make a few more mistakes. This particular issue, every three years, the city goes through a water study where the environment department comes down and does a critical analysis of all of our water structures. The good, one of the good items that came out of this was the really poor condition that well two was in. I think, I want to make sure that you guys recognize, we responded to that immediately. We used bond money to get that fixed. Well, two is coming online. That old broken down building is gone, and we'll repair that. The primary issue that happened is we failed to timely report the progress that we had made on the twenty issues. If the water department would have sent a letter in timely saying we fixed eighteen of the twenty issues, and here's our plan to finish the last two, we would have been compliant. So your water team, we took that seriously. I met with the crew when they were here. You know, our water department works under my direction, you know, so I own the fact that we didn't get that done. But it wasn't an issue. There's no boil order. There's no major failure. The system, we pass all of our tests all the time. So I really wanted to reconnect. The other thing that we learned in this process, so when Jamie came and reported what had happened, she and myself and the P I O met quickly to say, what's our response need to be? How are we going to do it? We developed the letter, and we had to put out the letter in the form that it came to us. We didn't get to say, this is what happened. We have to report to the public on that issue. We probably failed to really make sure that we put that information out, again, department-wide, city-wide, and get that out. We really focused on the public and how we were going to notify them. So again, we'll do a better job in the future. Hopefully, this doesn't happen, right? You make these mistakes. This is a good learning curve for us to recognize the importance of that. So, you know, I would, I would answer any questions that the commission might have on that particular issue down the line. A few things you're working on. Obviously, the audit for the city was due. Generally, those audits are due in December, but as our chief financial officer reported, due to a federal slowdown, right, they needed to give us a date to do a single audit. When you take federal money, you have to do a single audit on one of those federal programs. The White House, I'm not throwing you over in the bus, but it comes from the office of the White House. They set a schedule. They were delayed in getting their schedule out this year, so it moved everyone's audit down thirty days. And so we ended up with an extension to January twentieth instead of December twentieth. Okay, so the audit, they're here. They've been on staff. Our crew is, we're just really tired. So we've been on this for now fifteen days, I think, nonstop, trying to finish up and get the audit. The audit crew does believe we're going to be timely. It's due at five o'clock on Tuesday. We've been reviewing audit findings for the last three days. So they give us a finding, and then we get an opportunity to go find and see what we could do to clear, to clear that audit finding. And in every case, we have been able to find something to support our ability to think it's not a major finding, it's a minor. So the team's really spent hours doing this. I'm really, really thankful for them. I want to thank the crews for Christmas. I think the Christmas event was just fantastic this year, and, you know, it went up pretty fast and it came down just as fast. So thanks to everybody that works on our Christmas. You guys just came back from your training with the New Mexico Municipal League. The next municipal league meeting for the legislative session is set for the fourth and fifth of February. I will be attending, and so those of you that might want to go back, it's a one-day event. It's primarily meant to be and spend time at the legislature. Please let us know if we can get that, get that set up for you. I'll let the chief talk a little more about the police department open house, but that will be set that scheduled for next week. The vision there would be, so we have a design. We have a plan for how we're going to renovate that building for the police department. We have the seven hundred and fifty thousand in the bank to do so. So we're going to bring the public into the building, the space next week, so they can see the police, the chief's vision, the mayor's vision, and then we'll get, we'll get started, hopefully going to R F P really soon for that particular project. And then the last piece, we met with a contractor that potentially can paint the helicopter. So I want to thank O J. For putting that together. We have a temporary plan we're trying to build. I don't want to let too much out, but the first step was trying to find a way to get the helicopter painted. And so hopefully soon, we'll be trying to get that thing on display as quickly as we can. And with that, I would stand for any questions on the leaks, water leaks, or the public notice.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for that report. Commissioners, anybody have any comments, any questions? I just want to make one comment regarding the report that was sent out to the public from the environment department that we had assigned. That's not the way that I would have written the report. It unfortunately alarmed everybody on the front page, and it wasn't a resolution until you got way back down on the second page. Some folks that didn't take the time to read it or to comprehend it all the way through were somewhat overboard on some of their comments, and I can understand that. And so, you know, it's just, it was beyond our control. What you're telling me is that that's the form that it had to go out in, and I think it unnecessarily alarmed some of those in our community. And I'm glad for the explanation, and thank you for straightening that out for us.
Thank you. Let me comment because I did make some notes meeting with the team. Again, we do have two of the violations that are out, right? And they're, they're both on our main water tanks up on Cemetery Road. And the one repair that has to happen is on a valve, is on a sensor. It's a, it's a valve that needs to be replaced that is at the four-foot mark at the bottom of the tank. So we're struggling with figuring out how to get the water moved from that tank, right? We have to drain that tank to get to that four-foot mark to do that. So it's going to take a minute to repair that, and that's, you know, it's not just a simple, and it really doesn't have anything significant to do with the quality of the water, right? It's a, it's a valve that just wasn't functioning properly. So the team will continue to work. What's made it a challenge over the last two months is Love's is working in exactly that area. So it's become a challenge for us to figure out how to drain that tank, right? We may potentially have to move all that water out to get to that, put the new valve in, and then refill the tank. So it's a challenge. We'll get it done, and, you know, we'll, we'll be timely at the next time we get through this report.
Thanks, sir. Okay.
That's it.
Department head up.
Let's, I think the police chief is up next, and then we'll go to our departments. Let's, I think the police chief is up next and then we'll go to our departments.
Good morning, Mayor Potem, Commissioners. I wanted to start off by just kind of closing out December with the stats. And then next meeting, I'll have like a comprehensive view of what our crime trends are in the community with the presentation. And so just to kind of get an idea of how we close December out, the department fielded 1,055 calls for service. Animal Control had 133. We were still dealing with motor vehicle accidents. We had 24 for the month. Remember, some of these are going to be on private property as well, so it's not just public, so it could be private property. Sky reports, we had four follow-ups on those. We had one DWI, Coats was working seven different properties. We, we conducted 224 traffic stops for the month and issued 175 citations. The officers had 14 arrests. And then for trainings, we had a, an officer get certified as a dare instructor. So we're going to get that back in the school, we'll, we'll start that here pretty soon. They're working with the schools to, the scheduled time for them to work. Initially, it's going to be fifth grade, but they do have curriculum where they're going to work in the middle school as well and try to help those, those juveniles there. We had officers attend loved reconstruction class, hostage negotiations, advanced crime scene photography and grants management. We had a shop, shop of the cup. Our shop of the cup program was on, in December. Huge shout out and thank you to all the donors. We, obviously we can make it happen without them. We did serve 140 kids in our community and so Walmart also, they're huge in allowing us to do that. They set it up real nice, put some snacks and, and things out for the families to have while they're, they're shopping. And so that's that for the month, for the, for the stats. As mentioned earlier, we are having an open house at the new Police Department, 210 Main Street. That's going to be on Tuesday, the 20th. We do have some conceptual plans that'll be posted out there. People could come in, do a walkthrough of what the department looks like. We'll, we'll have another open house once construction's done, that way they can see where we're at. Just to reiterate, the reason that we push so hard for this is that, you know, we're, we're always trying to move forward and, and looking at, for the best interest of the community. But one of my biggest visions was to become an accredited organization. We have the policies, we have the option of doing the job, the work on a daily basis. But when we had the auditor come in and do a walkthrough of our facility, our current facility, there was, there was no way of getting accredited in that, in that facility. And so there were some issues there with your support. We were able to get this within our budget without getting a loan. And so I feel that it was extremely efficient and effective for us to, to find a way to do that and I appreciate that. Thank you for that. With that, I'll stand for any question you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Chief, how, how do you do shift change? Is there a debrief or a brief every shift where you pass on information or how does that go?
Okay, so we, so we work a lot of shifts. We send emails to, to each other, we have pass down email that's sent. And so any information that happened on that biggest shift is put down on that pass down. That way officers can follow up if need be.
Could, could I ask you just to maybe highlight the sixth and coach or your officers? I know we can't just afford to set somebody there, but perhaps they can make a couple of extra controls here and there, pay particular attention to it.
Yes, sir, absolutely. We'll, we'll address that, that issue. I mean, we're, we're out there trying to, trying to stop, it's not just, you know, specific residential areas we have.
Yes, sir.
There's across the town that has complaints. If we could get people to change their mindset on it and apply with whatever the rules are, then it'd be a lot easier.
Well, it seems like you're making a lot of contacts, so we, I know we're making a difference.
Yeah, and just to reiterate, we don't get any, the way, the way it's set up for citations, there's some people that think that we get any percentage of the citations. We don't, it doesn't go to us at all, it goes to the state, to general fund and the community doesn't see any citation. So every citation that we issue is, if, if it's adjudicated in the court, convicted, then that fee or whatever goes to the state, not to us. We, there's no specific, other than public safety benefit that we get. And that's, that's good enough for us to, to get those citations.
Yes. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, Mayor, we'll move on to our five departments. Let's just start with the clerks, she's sitting in there.
So in our office, we're currently working on business license. December 31st, but the businesses have a grace period until March 15th to get them in.
That's nice.
Almost 300 renewals so far. We changed our form up this year. We're trying to, each year we do have some businesses that come in and they're just like a one-time business that they'll come in and do like a contracting job or something like that. So we have it listed on our forms to where they can add that on there so we can close it out instead of having all these pending business license. And then in March, I'll be doing an IFRS training for our department heads. We've been getting a lot of IFRS in lately and we have a lot of directors that have retired. We have new staff that come in and we do have staff that's familiar with them, but then we have others that are not. So I'm just going to kind of go over a training, just let them know what the laws are, what their responsibilities are, if they do get some. Over here, under your guys' agenda, I did give you guys some email guidelines for IFRS. Sometimes you guys will get an IFRS for some of your emails or something like that. So that just kind of lets you know what you do need to keep, what you don't need to keep and what you need to provide to us should we send you an IFRS request. And I'll also be doing a tort claim training as well, because we, we do get quite a bit of those as well. And then our Parks Department and the Clerk's Office, we did our final training on our cemetery program. Right, go ahead. Click on the top one, copy. So right now, we're trying to do some input. It should be launched next week and, or next month, I mean, and we'll get all the information out to our PIO. But what it does is the community could go onto the website, they could enter in their loved one's name. It'll show where they're buried, it'll show their monument, their name, the date of burial, stuff like that. So that's pretty cool for the public instead of like when they go out on a weekend, it'll be easier for them to find the location. And then it does have a map on there, so it'll take them directly to where the burial is at.
That's cool.
Yeah. So that's all I have, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions?
I can have one question. In the municipal league training this week, we did a whole section on IFRS requests. And we were told that municipalities should have a designated person to, and that is you. I was just going to ask.
And the police department, they're their own records custodian. So if we get them, we send theirs over to them. But yeah, the clerk's office is designated.
Okay.
Yeah.
So one question is, so I've been getting, getting IFRS requests. There's an email string that involves myself and other people and you've gotten that request in and we don't have to be redundant, right? And repeat those things?
Correct. If it's an original and it's only sent to you, then you would provide it. More than likely, if it's between you and the city manager, I'll get that IFRS from the city manager. And if I see it and I don't have like a copy, then I'll.
So just in, in full interest of disclosure, I don't do any business on my personal cell phone. However, what we're told is that if you're going to conduct any business on our cell phones, we should probably have a city phone and keep that separate. We don't want to have our phones seized or separated or separate or anything else. I make a point not to do that. I think we should all buy into that. And if we require a phone, I think, you know, we were advised very strongly that we should have a separate work phone. And if the city could do that for us or maybe.
Do you want me to? It's funny you brought that up, we just talked about that yesterday. So we are looking into getting all of the commissioners, city issued cell phones for that reason.
Yeah, that's why I don't have my email on my phone.
So it takes me a lot of emails.
Consideration for us, so I appreciate that. Thank you for working on that. Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, I would just also give Commissioner Hopner a little credit for that. So he kind of prompted me a little bit last week to think about getting a phone for everybody. And so after our little meeting, I asked the team, what do we do, how do we do it? So, and then I think, I, I was unaware that we had laptops for commissioners. So we really need to make sure that whole process is right, where each of you would get technology, right? Because you could do the meetings on without paper, that would save us, have the ability to communicate and then have a phone. So we'll get that put together pretty quick. Michael and Angela are working on that.
And laptops that are issued from the city, just conduct city business on them, nothing else. That way these things, it stays clean and clear and we don't have any issues.
So we're getting a laptop?
Well, right now you guys have the tablets that you guys could choose. If you want a laptop instead of the tablet, then we can get you guys that.
I don't have, I gave my back, but I would, I don't even, I want to carry around another laptop, I'll just use mine.
And it's, and it's up to you, you, yeah.
There is wrong recommendations, something that we said.
Right, Mayor, let me, this, with phones, let me bring utilities down, let me bring Sonia because she does kind of take care of our phones and she would have some comments.
Yes, sir.
From the utilities.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Glenns. Yeah, so as far as the cell phones, we, we have promotions. And so most of our phones, all of our phones are a set price for us. And we actually have a promotional guide that you guys can pick from. So I can send that out to the city manager and then, and then they can give it to you. Also, in my department, I'd like to say that we are fully staffed. We have a customer service person, his name's Antonio Otero. He's been working with us since November. He's been coming along really well. I had him and another one of my people and then also the electric admin, she's young. I had him in training a couple of days ago and they had a three hour training for Tyler. I'd like to thank the finance department, they set up training for us. And I just think that's wonderful because we can send and they can learn. They were teaching us some new stuff that comes out, right? Everything changes on a consistent basis. We're also updating our Relay 5000. It'll be coming in next month and that's what actually folds and stuffs all our utility bills. So we're just going to keep our fingers crossed that it comes in and works great. Also, we were having issues with our affluent water and Jamie will talk about it more. But I also wanted to thank her and her crew. Mr. Whitehead picked me up, we all went out there, we came out with a plan, so we are still able to use affluent. And I just think it's wonderful when departments all work together, it makes everything so much better. Of course, this is the time of year where our red tags do go up. We have more red tags during this time of year and I think it's just the holidays, Christmas, everything like that. But the customers are coming in, they're making payment arrangements. Another thing with Tony, I want him to get comfortable with the customers. Because once a customer is comfortable with someone, that's who they want to talk to all the time, right? And it's great for him to know all the accounts and be able to answer any questions. We did have quite a bit of audit. I wanted to also just let everyone know that Chelsea Leclair, my AR, she worked very, very hard and diligently on the audit and I just wanted to praise her. I appreciate any of our workers that go above and beyond and I feel like Chelsea did. And I believe that's about all I have for you. You have any questions?
I, I guess, which might be addressed, so will our, right now our numbers are our personal numbers on our contact list. We'll have a new number that will be changed.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have, we'll change all of that and have it match the city issued phones.
Yeah. Sounds amazing.
Yeah. I mean, if you don't want one, again, you guys, you guys could opt out, you don't, you don't have to get one.
Yeah, and you know, Brian's are great and we have the list for Androids, we have the list for iPhone. So, I mean, basically you guys can get whichever phone that you feel most comfortable with.
So we can reach out to the phone, we can, we can add the internet or, so not the internet, we can also do our accounts, city accounts and do all that stuff on the phone. So keep everything in one place.
And then Michael, he sets up the email and everything on the phone also, so that'll benefit you guys if, if that's the route you choose to take. But we also will supply like an Otter Box for your phone, screen protector, stuff like that. And once you guys make the decision, it only takes three days, we can have your phone in three days. So just let me know.
Okay. Questions?
And Mayor, let me, let me just chime in because it, what we do is it's all a little bit, but she manages the phones. So we've got to get the team, what we want to do is really put together the program so that we could say, every commission going forward, this is what we're going to provide to you to do your job, give you that training, right? So if you don't want to use that technology, as long as you understand what's going to be required of you for IFRS, what's required for these pieces, it's up to you, you make that choice. I think the city just has to be clear on how we provide those to you, right? You shouldn't have to come in to see me to say, hey, can I get a cell phone? It should be when you come on board, here's the policy, you go to see Angela when you get all signed in as a new commissioner and she can do, get everything out, turn it over to you and get it put into place. That's what we need to kind of do to streamline it and then it's just your decision. So it'll take us a, probably a couple of weeks to get it all formatted, but we'll get it done and, and put it in a better spot.
Yeah, and I'll make sure Aunt has all the promotional stuff and, yeah, that way she can.
So Ms. Renfro, so your new position is also going to be in charge of collections?
Yes, sir.
And how are they doing with that and what's your, what's your plan for that?
You know, he's still learning, but we have started with our disconnects, delinquents or red tags. We're having him start making phone calls to people, calling to remind people of payment arrangements and stuff like that. So he's been doing really well, really well with that. And it's, it's a lot of help to me also and, and the team, of course.
At some point, I would like to see the numbers again and maybe an update and how we're, how we're doing with collections. Kind of give us, kind of give us an idea of what's out there and what needs to be picked up.
Yeah, the next time I come or even sooner, I can get all that information for you guys. Absolutely.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
It'd be helpful, I should actually maybe even have a listing of all the leads that have been reported. Because those are the ones that we want to look at, see whether we need to file anything for season, so, yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anything else? You guys have a great week.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you. Let's hear from the Fleet Department Service Center.
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Potem, Commissioners. Eric can move that up, good morning. You're a little taller than the last day. Well, over at the Service Center, since I've seen you folks last. Just give you the overview, we've gotten at least 28 full services accomplished, seven sets of tires replaced. With the colder months happening, we've replaced over 10 batteries. I've got batteries on the shelf and then I recently just acquired a new vendor Batteries Plus down in Las Cruces. So we've gotten a really good deal on those. Some of the larger repairs that have taken some time, we've got electrics back at truck at our shop. The impeller was getting rocks thrown into the impeller housing. So we purchased a new one through Pete's Equipment. We found the problem where rocks were coming into. I've got Ron Hoskins, he's actually going to weld the inside of a pipe to make sure that this doesn't happen and we can keep that truck for as long as we need it. So that's being done. Our guys, of course, put in the impeller. We've got a GMC trash truck from sanitation. It's got a Nissu motor, so we're getting the intercooler replaced.
It's got a Nissu motor, so we're getting the intercooler replaced. Um, again, the sweeper's down. Lots of hydraulic leaks on that thing, and, um, what the guys essentially have to do is draw all the innards, all the brushes to come out before you can get up under the cab of that to get at the hydraulic manifold. So I'm gonna have to replace some leaks up in there. Um, and we've also got this dilapidated streets roller. It, I think that they primarily use it for, um, flattening the, uh, the asphalt. It's got a one cylinder Deutz motor on it. Parts are very obsolete for it. Um, so I'm going to be looking on what we can potentially replace that. Um, because it's just, it's too finicky. It can be dangerous if somebody's not aware. And, uh, essentially it doesn't idle correctly. So you don't want that revving up and then trimming off somebody's toe, you know? Um, other things that are, we've got outsourced right now. John Deere down in El Paso, they've got a backhoe getting the transmission replaced. We've got two police cars out for bodywork, um, on insurance claims. One, the one truck from the Parks Department should be returning. The, uh, electrical power steering. Yet this, they don't have power steering anymore. It's, it's all an electronic rack. That's to be programmed by Chevrolet. So that's being done. And, right? And then, uh, when we received some new Durangos for the Police Department, I got recall letters within three weeks of those cars belonging.
Imagine that.
And, uh, and so from what I understand, all six vehicles have had the recall taken care of at the Dodge dealership. Or we're starting to see them putting coolant into the oil passages. And so we're just gonna keep a closer eye on what's going on with that. But right now, we've got two where we're seeing a problem reoccur. We just want to keep them on the road. Uh, currently, at the Service Center, we've got that Vector Truck from Electrics, the GMC Trash Truck, the Sweeper and the Roller. As for building, uh, as for our building, um, we've had an issue with our garage doors recently. So I've gotten a quote to, uh, have the controls replaced. That way we can have a chain drive over an electric. Um, basically the electric, we don't want that failing where we can't close the doors for the evening when we go home. That's what I have on my sheet. I'd be delighted to answer any questions for y'all.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have any questions? How many staff do you have now?
I've got, uh, two mechanics and an admin, and I myself do go down and and help out when I can.
Good.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mayor, just give Wyatt and the staff some kudos. I mean, we're, we're improving there. We're really building something. I think we're getting some things done and, you know, they're committed to that street sweeper. Again, we hope to get another, an additional one. We want that one to keep working um, as an enhancement. But the crew are, their, their realist just really feels good to be there. So we thankful for that. Uh, and everybody from Streets. Our Streets Department is going through a change, so we will, uh, not have Streets today. Let's go to wastewater and water.
So with the, as Sonia said, with the affluent water, just to touch base on that, our control panel where the contractors can put in their ID pins and their passwords went down earlier this week. So we are going in there and manually tracking and turning on and off the pumps for them. They do have to call either myself or my admin, so we can dispatch a, um, team member out there to get them water. It was, um, we would, we like them to use the affluent water, so we're not using potable water and, um, hydrant meters, issuing out hydrant meters. Because that puts a lot of stress on our water system that's already fragile as it is. Um, as City Manager, um, mentioned, we are still working on leaks. We're down to about sixteen on our list. We had about, we had four emergencies, three of which were this week that we had to complete this month. Um, Silver being one of them, and then we had one on second, um, on Sunday. And then we had a one on Birch, Eric, Burge and Third late last week. So we had four. Um, I am going for my water free certification at the end of this month.
Yay, good luck.
I'm going to training and then hopefully one or two months after my training, I can go for testing. It takes a process to get into testing, but I am going for training at the end of this month for my water free. I'm still working really closely on getting all of my crew members, at least an operator one, if not higher. I have Tony going for his water two shortly. Um, Conrad's going for his wastewater two um, training here shortly. And then we have Patrick also going for his wastewater two. So we will have several members um, with higher level operators. I'm working with J and H, who's our contractor for the shovel ready project. I've been meeting with them every morning to go over their plan. I'm working also with Kerry to get a communication plan in place, so that way we can communicate with the public on where we're shutting things off, where the rail closures are, and we're encouraging, um, everybody to sign to either call my office and give us an email address or a phone number we can contact them with. So that way we can use our doctor notify system to its full potential. We, unfortunately, when Silver did go down, we didn't have anybody sign up for notify in the system. So we are working, um, hard to get those numbers and those email addresses into our systems that we can get people notified promptly. Um, and for our wastewater, so we test weekly. We send out several tests weekly for wastewater. Those have all come back with no issues. Um, and the, um, compost, we have approximately ten of the piles that we've been working with ready to go out for testing next week. So we will hopefully have compost ready before everybody starts. And I will send any questions.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. And just likewise, I just can't say enough. I mean, we're building, we're trying to build a team from the inside, right? And, uh, you know, it's gonna take a minute, but we're doing training, we're practicing, and then we have to educate them while we're still fighting sixty or seventy water leaks. So, uh, we'll still work and continue to try to grow that. So I'm really proud of the work Jamie and the team have done. So with that, um, I would say that would be the end of my reports. It's all back to you now.
Thank you. Appreciate those. Let's move on to city commission reports. Who would like to start?
I'll go first.
All right. Mr. Glens, jump right in.
Uh, so my name is Chaz Glens. I just want to say a thank you to the voters for putting me in this position. I'm excited. Especially excited now that I have a good grasp of what's going on, especially in the Mexico Municipal League. That was really informative. It's good. Um, we did the newly elected officials and the, um, Mali Level One Training. Um, Open Meetings Act, Ethics, Municipal PACs overviews. It was really lengthy, but we got so much information out of it. Um, thank you to the mayor and fellow commissioners that went with me. Um, it was good to have you guys there for support, and it was really, really useful for me to be there. Um, looking ahead to some of my plans for the next year. Prioritizing infrastructure upgrades, we got a lot stuff going on with that now. It's exciting. A lot of construction going forward, but I'm looking forward to it. Boosting economic development, strengthening community partnerships, to enhance planning. And, um, I got some good resources as we did meet with Representative Dow. She gave me some good resources to look into for what we got going forward. Um, thank you again to the team, staff, Mayor Commissioners, Mayor Protent, uh, for your support. Together, we'll keep advancing together. Smarter Governance for T R C. So, thank you.
So what I just heard is you're gonna serve on the wrecking tourism board. Relucting those in a little bit. So there you go.
Thank you, Commissioner Glens, and welcome aboard.
He just put my full report to shame. Um, we can skip it. We could. No, I will just make a small report. Um, uh, it was great to go to the training. Um, got a fresh overview of a lot of stuff, met a lot of, um, other community mayors and commissioners and council members that are all in the same boat. It was interesting to just talk to each of them and find out what their, what their problems were in each one of their cities across New Mexico, and it was infrastructure, um, funding and affordable housing. And I just thought that, you know, it's, we're all in the same boat, and it was really cool to just kind of connect with those kind of people, even though they're newly elected. So me being a four-year veteran, I, they kind of like, you know, it was just a different perspective, and it was really, really cool to kind of get to meet everybody. Um, and of course, speaking with Rebecca Dow, um, she gave us a lot of great information coming down from the state level. Um, some programs that we'd like to get implemented here, uh, funding for the community, um, renovation of houses and, um, engaging, uh, especially people with disabilities, veterans, et cetera. So we'll bring that about later. Um, on the other, uh, front, I did attend the SCAR TAB meeting at the beginning of the month. Um, Kim Skinner, the chair, had asked me if I would just step in since Mary Jo was stepping off. Um, great resource connection in that meeting with a bunch of different people, um, from around the county. Um, I'm looking forward to either attending that again, or if we want to make Chaz go, I'm, I'm cool with not going to one more meeting a month, so. Um, but, uh, and then with what that could said, Folk Street Project, of course, I live on Folk Street, I work on Folk Street. Some days I can't even walk across Folk Street to get to my, my other place, but um, I've seen lots of progress and I'm excited, and it's hopefully going to be over soon. Um, I sleep at night and visions of jackhammers are in my head. It's just my whole rubbish. But it's gonna be a good show. And, um, come out to, uh, the open Police Department on Tuesday night. And if you can, stop by and meet the new Fiesta crew, which there is a new crew, and it's not me. So I'm happy that they're gonna be moving forward with the community. And thank you also to everybody for reelected me in last year. This year, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, um, everything is pretty much sad. But I wanted to say too, but here I'm looking forward, uh, going into the new year, working with the team here to make a difference in our town. And a lot of projects is gonna happen here. A lot of people will be happy that new water pipes go again. And yeah, yes, it will be construction fatigue soon, but still, when we look forward, what here we can accomplish. We are doing our due diligence here, going up to Santa Fe, getting funding for new projects and moving forward. And yeah. Yeah, and here's the same with downtown here. Last year was good. And yeah, I hope this year will be even better. And with more events going on with everything, we're getting new Port Street and here Fiesta will be amazing. So it's something to look forward. And here, thank you, uh, for uh, City Manager to be always there for us when we have questions. And also here to send us off to important trainings that we can grow as Commissioners as well. And yeah, and together we can make a difference. And let's have a good 2026.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, good morning. Last month, I attended a, uh, Christmas party with the 4-H kids and, and other, uh, community members at the Veterans Home. It was, um, it was put on by Denise Addy, who does a lot of outreach in our town, in our community, and a lot of these just really nice events. Keep your thoughts and prayers out to Denise. She is in the hospital. She's very sick. She is fighting cancer. Um, and she always plans a Valentine's thing at the Veterans Home. Um, but that is kind of being ran now by Victoria with Rebel. So if you guys want to volunteer for anything or help out with anything, uh, the 4-H kids also go and we hand out cards, um, to the veterans during that time, and they just love seeing the kids. We go into their, their little pods and they play games with them and everything like that. So any community members want to get involved with that, too. I know Victoria at Rebel is looking for any support with that as Denise is unavailable to be leading that right now. I just want to put a little plug in for our kids, um, Kay. It was first through fifth yesterday. I went to their spelling bee and we have some smart little kids. They are awesome. Um, it finally got down to the final round and there was three students and they they were just, all three of them, boom, 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 just getting every single word right. And there was words I had no idea what they meant, or they definitely didn't know how to spell them. So it was really cool. Um, a little plug, my son was his class representative. His goal was to make it out of the, the first round. And he made it to the final eight, so that was pretty cool. But, um, our kiddos are just super smart and it was fun. They streamed it so everybody could watch it and that, and that's um, it was cool to see. And then again, goals for the new year is obviously getting the money that we have received in the ground with our water lines. And yes, we are going to have water breaks and the community has to understand we've had that, we had that water pipe sitting up here for how long that you barely put any water through. So you just got to remember anytime we put new line in, that puts pressure and we're going to continue to have water leaks all the time. My kids, and I'm sure everybody else's kids love when school gets out, so, so they like it. So continue on. I don't know if I like it so much, but and that's it.
Thank you. All right, um, I'm not gonna talk too much about things that have already been talked about. Um, thank you to Commissioners Glens, Hepner and Mayor Protent Mitchell for the Municipal League attendance. I think it was good. I'll meet with Manager Whitehead sometime next week and kind of brief him on some initiatives and some opportunities for us.
Wait to single me out there. I didn't go. I'm newly elected. I've been here for six years.
Anyway, I'll meet with the manager, Whitehead, and kind of brief him on what happened and what's going on, what some initiatives that we can take or participate in. Um, spent the last couple of weeks preparing Manager Whitehead's evaluation. Got that done. It's ready to go. I have input from every one of you, uh, of our Commissioners. So thank you for submitting those things. We submitted them through the clerk. They were given to me, and then I, I put all those things on one form. Uh, also developed, uh, starting to develop the new evaluation. Uh, and the criticalness of this is that, uh, your evaluation is due in the last day of January, and your new evaluation is due in February. And according to your contract, there is a five percent raise attached to it. Um, so, uh, looking forward to issuing your evaluation and giving your new evaluation and setting, setting some new goals. So when you see, um, uh, in our, um, executive session, managed limited personnel manager, manager, it's not because he's in trouble. Uh, and we've seen in the past a few times, it's because we're going through a process right now of the evaluation, of evaluation, and uh, we'll work on that this, this morning a little bit and come up with ideas.
You'll never know. Maybe you will.
Get that done. Um, so also, if we're already lead to when we went to Santa Fe, we met the representative Dow. You know, only twelve percent of her constituents live in T R C. In other words, so, so we get a an overrepresentation from her. She takes care of this community because she lives here. Um, and, uh, and last year she supported the strongly, and I think she'll do that again this year. So we really appreciate her. And when we saw her, uh, yesterday, uh, we, we saw some of her passion for the job that she's doing. She's, she's, she's involved with the CYFD, uh, situation and, uh, had a couple of successes when she met with the governor, and, uh, she was literally in tears because it's such an impassioned and important, um, conversation that she had and an endeavor that she's trying to produce. Um, and so I really appreciate her, uh, her, her energy level and her compassion, and she's a great resource and a great person and a good supporter of our community. Um, going, we're preparing to go back to Santa Fe, have a way fourth and fifth, or Municipal Day. We'll probably also go on another day, uh, after talking to our Senator and Representatives, we'll figure another that we can go up there, what we can do the most good to advocate for uh, our capital improvement projects, which are, as you remember, the Bell Johnson Center, the Rex Center, Marie Street, uh, our substation power transformer and the wastewater treatment platform. Those are the five things that we're going to advocate for. I think we'll have a good chance, uh, develop a strategy to go up there and see what we can give for our community. Uh, it'll be exciting to do that. Always look forward to that this time of year. It's a thirty day session, so, uh, it's, it's gonna be a quick turnaround, but hopefully we'll get the support that we normally get. Um, so that kind of concludes my report. Any attorney?
Yes, um.
Yes, um. Um, from a litigation standpoint, things are fairly quiet right now, it's, I think, um. But just off the top of my head, I believe there's maybe about like three cases that are pending for quite some time, there really hasn't been much activity on, I believe there may be no case that was, uh. Recently, uh, filed, so it's my plan actually to talk to Gary to. Maybe get this on the agenda, maybe the next meeting, or when Gary feels appropriate, just so I can go into closed sessions, kind of be some updates. So that's kind of what my plan is, so, and I, I know we have, uh, Mr. Glens, who will probably also, but appreciate, uh, knowing where we stand, so that's gonna be the game plan here.
Alright, so, before we move on to calendar, that's, uh, it's now ten eleven, let's take a ten-minute break, and, uh, let everybody get refreshed, and, um, we'll get after it. We're ten-minute break.